This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening, everyone, and those joining us on Channel 191 on the cable network. This is the Southampton Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, October 25th, and we have four members present so far: Dan Le Valley down the end of the room, Stephen Johnson, Mark Darnold, myself, Paul Demon, and our consultant for the board, Richard Harris. The first order of business tonight is an A&R application submitted by Joyce and Robert Bard on Valley Road. Fifty-two Valley Road, to be exact, and we have Mr. Olexak that's here representing the clients and Heritage surveys and engineering to explain the plan for us. Come on up, sir.
Evening, everyone.
Evening.
So I've got an A&R plan here from, on behalf of Joyce Ellen Bard and Robert Bard. They are proposing to divide their current parcel at fifty-two Valley Road into two parcels. Both parcels meet the minimums for 140 feet of frontage and 40,000 square feet of area. We propose that Parcel Two take on the address of fifty-four Valley Road. And I'm not sure what else I need to present.
If you would just explain the difference in the plan with the one that was originally emailed that delineated the property line, just tell me, tell the board why that changed.
So, the Bard's own both Parcels One and Two on this plan by one deed. I had shown originally, a few weeks ago, Parcel One as One A and One B, simply because there's a 10-foot right-of-way that, way back when Parcel One was two parcels, back in the 50s, there was a 10-foot right-of-way given for the benefit of the parcel to the west for maintenance around a barn. That right-of-way is still in effect. So I decided to show the deed line, the old deed line there, to make it clear where that right-of-way was a benefit to. Upon talking with Mark Anis, one of our RLSs, he suggested I remove that line to avoid the appearance on this plan that we were separating into two building lots. But they do own Parcel One and Two by one deed, so I did remove that, and I just left a tie course in there to the right-of-way because it's still in effect, not practically, but in theory it is. So that's why there was a revision date of October 24th.
Very good. Questions from the board? It's just, you're just dividing it, these are new buildings, nothing, just?
He wants to, he wants to cut out Parcel Two as a separate building lot.
Okay, so we'll talk about that later.
So, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, no clearing at this point, so. Stephen?
No questions.
Mark? No questions. Okay, I have none, it's pretty clear-cut. Do I have a motion to accept this A&R?
What's the chapter citation? Eighty-seven P?
I think most would be to endorse the A&R and that the-
Endorse the A&R.
Pursuant to Chapter Forty-one, things eighty-one P.
So moved.
Motion made by Stephen. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mark. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. If you don't mind, I'll sign these tonight, and I'll drop them off at your office in the morning. Is that fine with you?
Yep, appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
You're good. You drop the check off, that's fine. I do. Do you even deliver? Next, the feature item tonight. It's a public hearing. A proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw, Section 12, the Water Supply Overlay District, regarding car washes, gasoline sales, et cetera. I'll read the public hearing notice, the abridged version of it, without boring you with it all, because it's quite extensive, but it was published in the Daily Hampshire Gazette on October 10th and 17th, and on those same dates, all the abutting communities around Southampton area were notified, Department of Public Housing, Pioneer Valley Planning Associates. And here is what the notification read. "Pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, Southampton Planning Board, hold a public hearing to discuss a proposed amendment to zoning bylaw, Section 12, Water Supply Protection District, in regard to car washes and motor vehicle gasoline sales. By amending the subsection regarding prohibited uses by deleting car washes and motor vehicle gasoline sales as a prohibited use, and amending the subsection regarding restricted uses by inserting paragraphs restricting car washes and motor vehicle gasoline sales facilities, and amending the subsection regarding uses allowed by special permit by amending the used commercial industrial uses which are allowed in the underlying district. Public hearing shall be held on Wednesday, October 25th at 7:00 PM, Meeting Room Town Hall, College Highway, Southampton. Complete text of the proposed amendment is available at the Town Clerk's Office or by contacting the SouthamptonPlanningBoard@gmail.com." So, to be transparent about this process and inform you of how this came about, I would like to just give you a little information before we open the public comment period here. The True Hearts who own the property, subject property that we are discussing tonight, which is over by the car wash adjacent to Harley-Davidson, and that section had been approached by Big Y, and they were exploring a project for a car wash, a gasoline sales, and a convenience store on that parcel. They came to us and found that the current bylaws are contradictory and confusing, which they are. So, to accommodate this inquiry and to see if this property and this proposal might go forward, the board met with different departments to get their information on it. The State Fire Marshal's Office was there, the Building Inspector, the Fire Department, the Highway Department, two members from the Planning Board, and Richard Harris, the consultant, to outline the options going forward, to see what might happen with this parcel, given the zoning. So since gas stations and car washes are not allowed in the district, Big Y had offered, should we go forward with investigating to see if we can explore the possibility, if this is going to be proposed for an amendment change, they offered a professional consultant to come to this meeting to answer any technical questions which are above and beyond this board's expertise and our consultant has. I may want to note that the existing car wash, somehow, that was approved several years ago, I believe it was back in 2012 or 13, is not a use that is allowed in that district. However, Richard found where it could have been an easy oversight, because there's one paragraph that's kind of cloudy on the issue, but yet, way down into the Water Supply Protection bylaws, two or three pages later, then it's spelled out that it is not allowed. So for all intents and purposes, that car wash is a non-conforming use, and it is, it is not my opinion that we should send out a notice and shut them down, it's an error that was an oversight, but it is, it's not a gas station, it's a car wash. However, we are here to try to change that zoning if the board so chooses to send it along to the Select Board for warrant approval for the special town meeting in December. So without further ado, I am not going to read the entire zoning amendment change, because it's pretty clear-cut we're after here, but if there's any questions from the public, certainly feel free to ask when you're called on to speak, and then the consultant from Big Y will be here to answer any technical questions that the board or the public may have. So at this time, I will open it up to the public for their opinion on what might, their views be on this proposed change. And when you get to the podium, just give us your name and your address, please.
Mr. Chairman, while the person is approaching, do we have a map of the Watershed Protection District that we can share with the audience tonight? Rather thought electronically, but-
Are you gonna hold it up for me?
There you go, man. Johnny, on the spot. Do you know what fraction of the town?
I do not.
It's technical, a lot.
It's a substantial portion.
Over here, and all these overlay districts here that have that-
That's all right, it's no benefit for the public, thank you. It's available on the website.
I guesstimate it's over a third.
I'm sorry?
I guesstimate that's over a third of the town.
Over one-third.
That'd be my guess.
Yeah, like, in two different areas, really? East and west. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, I'm Richard Salloy. I live in Westfield, and I'm a member of the Westfield Planning Board, and I'm representing them tonight. I'd like to start off by reading you a letter from the Planning Board of Westfield to you, and then I'll continue with a few extra comments when I'm done. This is DePaul Demond, Chairman, Southampton Planning Board, 210 College Highway, Southampton, Massachusetts. Subject is Proposed Bozoning Bylaw Amendment Regarding the Water Supply Protection District. Dear Chairman Diamond, please accept this communication as part of a public hearing on the above matter. At our meeting on October 17th, the Westfield Planning Board reviewed the proposed amendment that would allow car washes and gas stations within your Water Supply Protection District, which includes our regional Barnes Aquifer recharge areas. As you know, this is a critical drinking water source for several communities, and as aquifer areas and their subsurface flows do not recognize town boundaries, both of our municipalities would assume a risk as a result of this change. Any loosening of restrictions would open the door for further incremental changes, and eventually destroying the integrity of the zoning protection. Westfield is well-aware of the inherent conflicts between development and resource protection, as well as the effects and costs associated with the groundwater contamination. Unfortunately, unfortunately, while we have not studied the nuances of all your regulations, nor understand the impetus for this change, on its face, we see no upside, and only a risk for both Southampton and Westfield. Among other uses, our zoning restrictions prohibit gas stations and car washes in our corresponding district. We urge Southampton to maintain this regional consistency. We are confident that if the Barnes Aquifer Protection Advisory Committee, Bay PAC, was still active, they would wholeheartedly concur. Our board is unanimously opposed to this change, and encourage the Southampton Planning Board to recommend against adopting this amendment at your town meeting. Syncordially, Westfield Planning Board, William Correll is chairman. We, in Westfield, work very hard to protect the aquifer. We have had issues with it, we have, we've been working to get costly changes made to correct the problems that were incurred because of Barnes Airport. We, over the years, have been very lax in maintaining our natural resources. This is one of the main water supply sources in this part of the state. It's been contaminated, we are working to clean it up, but, as you said before, your town has, a third of your town is covered with the recharge area. Everything flows south, so anything that happens here affects the whole aquifer down into Westfield. We need to maintain the integrity of our zoning laws to protect us and protect the national resources. This board, along with the Westfield Board, and the Holyoke Board, and every other board of the Planning Board, tries very hard to protect these resources, and we need to continue to do that. This change would not be doing that, because it's not a matter of if we're gonna have some kind of a problem from a gas station in the area, it's when, and how bad. I have, over the years, my younger years, I worked in gas stations, and you see spills all the time. They may be small, they may be large, but they do happen. And to take this chance on this sensitive area of the recharge area by putting this in there is not the thing we need to do, looking forward. It took us years to clean up the Connecticut River, the Westfield River, the river out of the White Reservoir. All those have gotten contaminated over the years, because we did not take the effort to prevent that from happening. And it wasn't just us, it was our grandparents and our great-grandparents. They saw the rivers as a way to get rid of waste. We have found that it's not the way to get rid of it. It contaminates it, and we have a problem then with the fish coming out of it that we use for food, for recreation, and now this is, of course, this is the water supply. And like I said, it's the largest underground water, natural water supply in this part of the state. We have reservoirs, but nothing like this anywhere else in this part of the state. So we need to protect it, and protect it by keeping the zoning laws firm, that we do not put things in there that can get in there and contaminate this water source, and contaminate these natural resources. I thank you for your time. I hope you consider this extremely important, and vote against it, and send a negative opinion to your council.
This is a list of couple of letters for you. Would you finish them?
Thank you, sir. Mark? Yes, Cindy.
Hello, Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale Road, former member of the Planning Board. A couple of questions, Paul. You mentioned bringing together some other experts from the municipal government, et cetera. Were the water commissioners represented at that meeting? I didn't hear you say them.
I think they were, but I can't be sure right now.
Okay.
All the departments were notified, but I can't remember, I didn't take the minutes.
I believe it's worthwhile to at least have a second shot at them, and, you know, call them up, because they also, in-
Go ahead.
In my experience with being in contact with water commissioners for other reasons, they do, they are concerned about, you know, water protection. I want to remind everybody that this town has, over the last few years, been awarded grants for drinking water protection over the aquifer, and we have, you know, two large areas right on Palmry Meadow Road that have been, you know, we've been able to acquire for, 100% for protection because of drinking water, because it is over the aquifer. You also did mention Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, I think you said they were present, and I happen to know they have experts, and Patty Gamborini being one of them on water protection, I just wondered if they had-
No, they weren't present, Cindy, they were notified by, as the cities and towns were-
Oh.
Yeah, as an agency, not, no one showed up from there.
Oh, okay, well, again-
I had no correspondence from them.
So, during my tenure on this board, limping along with my minimal knowledge, I was, hopefully, a little bit helpful in, at the time of the stormwater bylaw creation, and I remember Patty being quite expert on the aspect of drinking water protection, and I know we're working hard to uphold that bylaw. I'm also currently a member of the Public Safety Building Committee, and we're looking at various lots that could eventually be considered for a site of a public safety building, and what came forth were at least a consideration of some other spills in the past in areas where there is a current gas station, and I don't know the status of that, but I know that came out in terms of the review of the potential sites. So, Mr. Salloy, is that your name, Salloy? Mr. Salloy did mention things happen, and I don't, never worked in a gas station, but I sure pump gas, and I see, you know, a lot of opportunity for spills and danger and all that, and I think we, as public citizens, have a great responsibility for upholding all the things we're doing. So, while I do know that there's gotta be a balance between development and, you know, all of the, you know, things that happen with commercial development, we really do have that super-large overlay district, and we do have the Barnes Aquifer below us, and we've had scientists in the past from Smith College come and speak to us about where we are, and what it's all about, and to me, we really have responsibility to remember that this is a major responsibility, not only for Southampton, but for Westfield and everybody down the road, and I don't know if, well, East Hampton is north of it, so they haven't probably had a reason to opine. That's my point. Thanks.
Thank you, Cindy.
Mr. Chairman, can I, may I speak?
Go ahead.
As you know, we got a letter from the Hodeck Planning Board, too. One of the things I did was I looked at regulations for water supply protection for Amherst, East Hampton, Hadley, Holyoke, North Hampton, South Hadley, and Westfield, and water supply districts, recharge areas are divided in three zones. One, which is right on top of it, two is a secondary, and three is a tertiary. Westfield protects one and two, they don't protect three. It's unclear what zones Southampton protects. Southampton doesn't differentiate between one, two, and three. I think it'd be very helpful to find out exactly what is the one, two, and three areas in Southampton. Holyoke basically takes Zone One, and it's whatever the state regs are for Zone One. Zone Two, they prohibit certain uses. Zone Three, the more flexible one. South Hadley just lands law in one area. So there's a wide variation, and as I mentioned, Chair, Holyoke, I'm not sure how they come out exactly and say that gas stations aren't permitted. They prohibit motor vehicle light services, but don't define what motor vehicle light services are. Other places in the zone ordinance, they do define motor vehicle gas stations, motor vehicle service, but they don't, there's inconsistency in their ordinance as to what terms it means, and it'd be very helpful for them to clear that up. And again, they do one, two, and three. You've got North Hampton, they don't use one, two, and three, they use primary and secondary. Amherst regulates by one, two, and three zones. East Hampton in primary and secondary. Hadley just regulates Zone Two. They basically, I assume they either own all of one, or they defer to the state regs. So I think there's some benefit to some further exploration, if the town doesn't go forward this one, to try to come up with something that is more consistent among the different cities, because, for instance, if you're regulating Zone Three and Westfield's not, then you're providing much more protection than Westfield is. And I think that's, and with Holyoke, what they allow, what they don't allow, so it's some benefit to, even if this goes through, to look at the broader picture, the Water Supply Protection District down the road, as to one, two, and three, and stratifying the uses and prohibited and permitted. And there's also different uses of how they, you know, regulate or don't allow, or do allow above-ground storage. Hadley has the most permissive. Hadley doesn't specify car wash, doesn't specify gasoline stations, and prohibits fuel storage unless they meet certain above-ground requirements. So I think there's some, and I think they probably reflect the more current technology in terms of fuel storage and containment. So, and it's, it'd be some, there's some vagueness in different ordinances, and the issue we had with this is that there's a provision of the Water Supply Protection District that states, and I'll make clear to people that, there's a section that says, "Uses allowed by special permit. The following uses may be allowed by special permit obtained from the Board of Appeals: commercial, industrial uses which are allowed in the underlying district." But you have to flip back to another section that says prohibited uses, and it adds in there car washes and motor vehicle gasoline sales. So unless you know, look back at the prohibited, you're not gonna catch that. And so there's some benefit to, and one of the, part of the amendment here refers the prohibited back to, the special ones back to the storage tanks and stuff like that, so that it makes me look at the other portions of it, as opposed to just looking at one sentence in that portion of the bylaw.
It makes me think that I didn't preface that the purpose of this is not for underground tanks, by the way, it's above-ground gasoline storage tanks. But nevertheless, I'm gonna go on and read a letter from the Office of Planning and Economic Development, from the City of Holyoke that I received this afternoon. Dear Chair Demon, please accept this communication as part of the public hearing record on the above matter. At our October 24th meeting, the Holyoke Planning Board reviewed the proposed amendment which would allow for car washes and gas stations within Southampton's Water Supply Protection District. Holyoke has a substantial interest in the integrity of the Barnes Aquifer recharge areas, including within your water protection supply district. The Barnes Aquifer is an important water source for our city, and indeed, a number of our Holyoke residents rely on wells drawing directly from the aquifer. Any weakening of the protections now and- Any weakening of the protections now in place to prevent contamination of the aquifer constitutes a risk to every community relying on it. Subsurface contamination cannot be confined within one community's formal borders, and as recent experience has shown, it cannot be undone nor always mitigated. No matter how remote a risk may appear to be, it must be weighed against the potential harm. Compromising the safety of a major supply of potable water is at once a public health and environmental catastrophe and an economic loss that far outweighs any short-term gain that might be hoped for permitting risk-creating uses in water supply district, for Southampton as much as for Hodeok and the other communities with an interest in the Barnes Aquifer. Hodeok is sensitive to the need for economic development, and we would ordinarily be hesitant to argue against a measure that might be intended to support it. But we have concluded that any such interest must give way to our collective interest in the safety of our water supply. Accordingly, Hodeok's zoning prohibits gas stations and car washes in our corresponding districts, as well as prohibiting other uses that pose a risk of groundwater contamination. We do so with the understanding that this is important to protect not only in Hodeok, but our neighbors who also rely on the Barnes Aquifer. Our board is unanimously opposed to the change and encourages the Southampton Planning Board to recommend against adopting the amendment at your town meeting. Best regards, Hodeok Planning Board, Mimi Panach, Chair. At this time, is there anyone else that would like to speak outside the representative from Big Y? At this time, I welcome you to comment about the possibility of what you might have in mind for above-ground storage.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Guy Hesketh. I'm a licensed professional engineer with the firm F.A. Hesketh &amp; Associates. Our corporate offices are in East Granby, Connecticut. For about 30 years now, I've done consulting work with the Big Y. I am licensed in both Connecticut and Massachusetts as a professional engineer. I think the last time I was before your board was in the year 2000, when we actually did the work up at the current Big Y grocery store that was remodeled. I think it was 2000, 2001, Chris, when we did that. But Big Y has—with the current owner of the parcel has an option agreement to explore the feasibility of what they'd like to do is site a, what they call their convenience store, Big Y Express, and that has a fueling station component to that. And they're also interested in the car wash. There's a number of sites now that Big Y runs car washes, so this is an opportunity for them to take the existing site that's there, continue the operation of the car wash, and then convert the other commercial portion of the plaza or the parcels that are there now to site a convenience store. I do have a concept map here. Is that okay to show that? And I can—I can turn it around for the camera when I get to it. This is College Highway. This is a Google overlay image. This is the Queen B Car Wash located here. And currently, there's a—I believe it's a pool supply store located here. And the owner has a— an office in a construction—I don't know. It's a building or something like that.
Right.
Yeah. And what the— what Big Y would like to do is— there's actually three par— or four parcels that are part of this. A parcel of number 23, number 25, and 27. 27 is the home. They would look at keeping that home there. They wouldn't have that as part of this commercial redevelopment. And then essentially, over the same footprint that you see there now, or the same impervious area, is have a canopy, fuel dispensers located in the position of the pool store, leave the vacuums here, leave the car wash accessed here, utilize the same entrances. And then in the area where the construction office is, a little bit to the left of that, they would have a convenience store. The prototype they're looking at is about 2,000 square feet or so. Parking in front of the convenience store. And they would be looking at citing above-ground storage tanks in this area here, and then have it designed so that a truck can come in and back into that area there. There are a number of requirements for citing these tanks that include fire code requirements, planning requirements, a number of things. So Big Y has their gas station expert that's here this evening that will answer questions and explain how these tanks work. But my understanding is this, from a review we had done by an environmental attorney who's working on the project, is it's in the zone two of the aquifer protection, is what he thought that—that it was in. And in under CMR and Code of Massachusetts Regulations 310, there's some— there's some regulations that specify what things are allowed and not allowed. And one of the prohibitions in the zone-two waterhead protection areas is that you cannot have storage of liquid or hazardous materials, including gasoline, except if that gasoline is above ground level, is on an impervious surface, and then either has—in a container or above-ground tanks within a building, or has to be outdoors and covered containers or above-ground tanks in an area that has a containment system designed and operated the whole 10% of the total possible storage capacity of all containers, or 110% of the largest container. So those are general parameters for that. What we would be proposing here would be state-of-the-art above-ground storage tanks that would meet all of those requirements. We did have a consultation at the staff meeting, as the chairman indicated, with both the local fire marshal and a person from the state fire marshal's office that are quite familiar. The state fire marshal was brought in because the local fire marshal, it wasn't his area of expertise. He felt more comfortable having somebody from the state. And yeah, we were—he felt pretty comfortable with the state fire marshal that this is a recent type of technology that is protective, meets the requirements. He's seen a number of these systems go in around the state. That's the kind of thing we'd be looking for. A lot of the watershed protection regulations, especially dealing with underground storage tanks, were promulgated initially under the Clean Water Act circa 1973 and shortly thereafter because of a number of leaking underground storage tanks. You remember the old days, they were steel tanks in the ground. They had issues with them. You know, current technology now is double-contained tanks with interstitial spaces that have monitoring in them and things like that. Even tertiary containment now in some of the tanks that go in. So in additional monitoring that's done outside of the tank. So the technologies have really advanced since the 70s, 80s, even 90s. And what we'd be looking at are state-of-the-art types of tanks. So again, as the chairman indicated, Big Y has an interest in this parcel. We had set up a meeting with all of town staff to discuss, you know, what are possible pathways for this. And the first step with that was to meet with town staff. Mr. Harris had—as part of his review indicated that there's an existing non-conforming use on the lot, and that if anything were to happen, then certainly those non-conformers would have to be cleaned up. So again, this is the first step. I'll turn the time over to Mr. Webster, who is an expert on gasoline tanks and dispensing. And he can introduce himself and his expertise. And then I think if he just gives an outline of what's proposed in this, give you a level of comfort. Then any questions you have regarding the tanks, he can certainly answer any of the site issues. I'll do my best to answer. Again, I have sort of a concept that's fairly scale accurate, but that's kind of the direction we'd be heading, and it's probably, you know, 85% complete type of drawing, so thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Larry Webster. I work for Alfred Benish &amp; Company. I'm not a proponent or opponent of what you're proposing to do. I'm here to provide information. I've been working in the petroleum industry, starting in 1968 as a laborer, doing installations. And following through till now, I worked for an engineering firm doing site design and system layouts for gas stations. So I have—it's fair to say I have a lot of experience in the field. And as Guy pointed out, things today are not what they were even 15 years ago, never mind 50. I've dug out a lot of tanks that were leaking. I've worked on remediation of sites that were contaminated. But I'm a lot more comfortable with today's technology. And I have to say, because I've dealt with all kinds of owners, that Big Y is one of the more responsible corporate entities in terms of they're—they spend the money they need to spend to build it right, to put in state-of-the-art, to maintain it, and make sure that everything is monitored and taken care of as needed. So what essentially we're proposing to do here is put in three above-ground storage tanks with an aggregate capacity, I think, of 32,000 gallons. The maximum size they can put in for an above-ground tank, according to the regulation, is 12,000 gallons. Their typical sites that they put in actually are 20,000 times two, 40,000 total. So this is a slight reduction. The tanks that we're talking about today are not a steel shell on a support. These are a double-wall tank. They're essentially—they build a tank, they build another tank around the outside of the first one, about three-inch offset between the inner tank and the outer tank. That annular space, they call it, is filled with a lightweight concrete material. And it is extremely well insulated. It is extremely resistant to any mechanical damage. There's a standard they have to be tested to, it's UL 2085, that requires that tank to be put in a furnace at 2,000 degrees for two hours. The average temperature inside that tank cannot exceed 250 degrees after two hours. That's the kind of insulation we're talking about. The tanks are equipped with emergency venting systems to— so that if there would be—if they would be caught in a fire, the biggest hazard of a tank above ground that's being subjected to a rapid heat rise is expansion of the contents and a catastrophic explosion to the tank. The tanks are equipped with venting devices that will— based on the size of the tank —will vent any possible amount of vapor that can be generated in that tank under environmental conditions for assuming a completely engulfed tank surrounded by— completely surrounded by gasoline and engulfed in a fire. So it vents the excess. It makes a nice jet up in the air of flame, but the tank itself is not affected, and no gasoline, no liquid gasoline escapes. The tanks are literally bulletproof. They fire, I think, five rounds of 30-caliber— 30-caliber ball ammunition at approximately 2,700 feet per second. That's a high-powered rifle with no damage to the tank. Basically, it's a— outer steel wall is backed up by concrete, so they just don't penetrate. The— beyond that, beyond the tanks themselves, which probably are the safest part of this whole system, once the gas is in that tank, it's really secure. But from there, the gas travels into the ground through a transition sump into a double-wall flexible piping system. It's essentially— comes in a big roll. It's a pipe within a pipe, similar to the tank within a tank. It's fusion-welded plastic, so they're—from the sump at the tank to the sump at the dispenser, there are no fittings. Everything is contained within the transition sumps. Each of the transition sumps has a sensor in it to detect any liquid in there and set off an alarm. Additionally, the pumps themselves are equipped with electronic monitors that will detect the loss of pressure in that line and shut down that submersible if there is a problem with the line. All of this is tied into an electronic monitoring system inside of the store, which alarms at any unusual condition. All of this is also—in addition to all of this, it's subjected to annual testing for various components. The system itself is pretty comprehensive. The chances of actually having a spill at a gas station these days, other than a person dispensing gas and pouring it on the ground, is insignificant if it's maintained. So the— let's see, what else do we need to talk about? I guess—
Is there—
The other thing is the area, as Guy mentioned, where the truck delivers and where they hook up the pipes to fill the tanks. That whole area is designed to drain into an oil-water separator, to separate out, if there is a spill, to contain it, separate out—the gas and make sure that it doesn't get into any groundwater anywhere. The extent of that and the nature of that is yet to be determined, and that's something that's within your jurisdiction, if you will. We're not—for my understanding is you're not proposing to blanket allow these. It's going to be a case-by-case. People are going to have to come before the Planning Board, or I assume the Board, and present a full package of what's being done. I just—I can't emphasize enough the difference between what's being built today, especially by people who are willing to put their time and effort into building state-of-the-art, compared to what we were doing 20 years ago, and never mind 30 years ago.
Is there a containment area—I thought I heard in a previous feeding, a concrete containment area around those tanks that's like four feet high or something like that?
That's—the requirement is that there be a containment system. That is one option. The tanks themselves, the wall, that concrete space between the walls is permeable. So if there is a leak in the inner wall, it travels through that, and there's a— there is a sensor at the bottom of that tank that will alarm and shut things down if it detects product in the annular space of the tank. It's—it is 110% of the volume of the tank contained in the annular space.
But there is no barrier around the perimeter of those tanks?
There is no— there is no concrete wall around it. The concrete pad itself is sloped and designed so that if there is any liquid collecting on there, it's channeled into the oil-water separator so that it's not running across the yard and into the street.
How much does the oil-water separator hold?
That depends. Ideally, there's a small—a small treatment device that takes the water and oil or gas through it, separates out, lets the water pass through, and collects the gas typically till there's around 50 gallons in it, which is way beyond most—way beyond 99% of the spills that you encounter. And then, at a best-case scenario, you would have a diverter at that point, a solenoid valve that would automatically—if that reaches containment level maximum, it would divert the excess into a holding tank. And the size of that would be determined by engineering in terms of what the— what would be considered to be adequate for the potential for spillage.
Any other questions for this gentleman before he sits down? I mean, I have a list—
I have none for you.
I have a couple. You're talking about the interstitial area, the tank, the annular space. You said it's filled with concrete, is not left open and void to collect the possible leak with the sensors inside there? You said it's just a permeable—
The concrete that's in there is permeable, so it allows the liquid to pass through it. The outer shell of the tank with the concrete contains more than the volume of the inner tank.
So I guess I'm a little bit confused. You have the inner tank, which holds the gasoline.
Right.
You have an outside tank, and then that space in between is filled with permeable concrete, but the voyage ratio in there can't be enough to hold 70% of the tank of the gasoline.
No, but bear in mind, you still have the entire space of the inner tank to— so if that tank fails, the outer tank is that— if that tank fails, the outer tank is that volume plus the volume, plus that annular space volume. So now we have an outer tank that has a larger volume than the inner tank that can contain the gasoline that was in there.
Yeah. If the inner and outer tank were both ruptured, then you have no way to contain the spill.
Except for the secondary system where we catch it.
Is that like going through like an MDC trap, just a...
They're, they're hydrodynamic separators, basically, that allow the water to pass and separate out.
And then, I mean, my special is like, the oil-water separator, that's primarily get the volatiles off, but the, the liquid leaving that is not necessarily, you know, suitable for discharge to either surface waters or groundwater. So, and we, you know, so if that oil-water separator was at capacity, the, the water leaving that would not meet...
If it were at capacity, that's true. That's why you would need a secondary system, depending on how much we need to contain. But the, the, it's hard to explain. You can drive a car into these tanks and they won't be damaged. They, they might have a little scratch on the surface. It's, they're just, and in addition to the durability, they are remote. They're, they're a distance from any vehicle traffic. They are protected with volleys from any stray vehicle that gets back there to mitigate any impact.
Yeah.
They're, they're, it's just not, they're pretty indestructible.
Yeah. Again, and...
There, there's no reason that you would have a rupture of an inner and outer tank. There's practically no reason you would have a failure of an inner tank.
Yeah. And the, the piping, again, not to get in details, but the piping, suction's off the top of the tank, it doesn't come off the side or the bottom of the tank?
Pumped out of the top. If that pump is not running, no gas flows. There's, it can't, by law, it can't siphon.
Steve?
I appreciate the reason I said I have no questions for you. You've given us a massively detailed review of the current technology of the gasoline industry. Together, you've presented a conceptual site plan that's very comprehensible and understandable. But what's before us, Mr. Chairman, is bylaw change affecting the entire town or the relevant district? And I think we've gotten far into site plan review when we're supposed to be looking at the benefit of amend, the potential, the putative benefit of amending a bylaw that we've already, a protective bylaw that we've already put in place for one industry or maybe one applicant. Our consultant has provided information about how we compare the neighboring communities and the state regulatory system, which is based around Zone 1, 2, and 3. We believe this is in Zone 2. Zone 1 has mandatory state requirements. Zone 2 is the next thing that municipalities better well protect. Zone 3 is additional land that absorbs water and it, it performs a useful purpose. But regulating Zone 2 is really at the core of environmental regulation. So I, I am sensitive to the fact that this may be a thoroughly thought-out use for the property with lots of safeguards in place. That's not what's before us. We're not doing a site plan review, we're reviewing the bylaw. I would generally support performance standards, and this is of that variety. Is that right, Mr. Harris?
Yeah.
However, it doesn't address performance standards for all the other prohibited use, prohibited uses in this district. Is that correct?
Right.
So I oppose.
So, in fairness to not only the applicant, but the, the amendment change, isn't it fair to present the opposing views of why it should be considered with above-tank storage, with the, with the strides they've made in the last 15 years, 50 years, well before this...
Yes. I'd say I was very much in support of performance standards for each of the prohibited uses.
So, so each person could make a, you know, a relatively good decision based on both factors?
No. The town can establish the performance criteria that each applicant would meet. And those, I mean, that's a big, it's a big writing project to set performance standards for gasoline retail, car wash, dry cleaners, auto repair, confined animal feed operations. What else is on our list of prohibited uses in the aquifer zone? This is not spot zoning, but it's concept zoning, just for one industry. And I don't think that that's beneficial for the town.
No. I, I respect your opinion, but in the, in the fairness to get all the information out for both sides of the issue, his presentation, I don't think was uncalled for whatsoever.
No criticism.
Nor any...
My, my question on the table, on the table is please explain how this is beneficial to the town as a whole over the long term. I, I've got plenty on the technology of dispensing and storing gasoline. But how is this beneficial for the town?
So what I'm hearing from the Y representatives is a different perspective. You've already said that you oppose this, so that is one perspective. I want to hear the other's perspective as well.
Yeah. No, no, no. I'm entirely open. I want to hear more, the thing that I'm looking for, but it's not yet been addressed.
Let's not let this get out of hand. We can do it civilly here, so let's keep on going.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, and I understand the concerns for this because I think anytime there's a change, there's, there's concerns with how those changes could negatively impact something. I think one of the, the important things to, to remember is that in addition to the regulatory authority that you have as the planning board, the state of Massachusetts has a giant series of environmental regulations under 310 CMR. And they have vetted this type of use and specifically in their, in their regulations under CM, CMR 310, under the watershed protections. They allow for above-ground tanks because they recognize that below-ground tanks are a potential.
Don't argue with that.
So I think, in a sense, the state has a series of performance standards that are, are both under the environmental regulations and under their fire protection code. So, you know, whatever we were to do on this site, we would have to comply 100% with whatever CMR requires us to do. We have to comply with 100% of whatever the fire protection code in the state of Massachusetts is.
You live on any square foot in the common...
In addition to NFPA and EPA regulations and stuff, so...
Again, please understand, I am in support of performance standards, but we have to write them for every industry.
Yeah. And but, but the, this is, the gas station and dispensing is probably one of the more regulated industries, both on a state and a federal level, so I...
I'm sympathetic.
Yeah. So I, I think from, from that perspective, I think if this, if this board were to determine, okay, this, this would be a, a use under special permit, um...
No, no. I understand that it is...
We would still have to comply with the...
...in Commonwealth Massachusetts, we'll posit that. Is it a beneficial use of land in Southampton that lies over our sole source aquifer? That's really what it comes down to. I, I, again, commend you on the site plan, on the thoroughness of your preparation, your understanding of the industry, technology, safeguards, the fire codes. I, I've said my piece. I applaud you for your thoroughness. I just am not ready to understand it in the context of benefiting the town as a whole through a zoning bylaw amendment. Thank you.
Can we still ask questions, Mr. Webster?
Go ahead, Daniel.
Whenever I think of these issues, I always think of my child and the future, right? Me, I'm not going to be around for that long, but, you know, they have a period. You know, so it's all about them. So I'd want to hear a little bit more about what happens in, say, 50 years. Let's say when Big Y decides they don't want to own this anymore. How does, how is Southampton and the residents of Southampton, how are they still safe? How is their water still safe in this situation?
I would posit that in 50 years, we won't have any gasoline tanks.
Possibly.
It's very likely, based on the way things are going right now. These tanks have a 30-year warranty. Massachusetts in general, as a guideline, feels that tanks should not be kept in service beyond their warranty period. They do not require you to remove them, but that is a guidance.
Mm-hmm.
I would say that it would not be imprudent of me to have an ordinance that says you can't keep tanks after that time.
So that would have to be in our municipal ordinance to say not to exceed the warranty period. It's not covered by Massachusetts law.
It's not in law.
Okay.
It's just a guideline.
Thank you.
It is in Connecticut law.
Interesting.
The other thing is that above-ground tanks in particular are particularly not difficult to remove from a site.
Sure.
If they change the use of the site, put in a bunch of charging stations to give a store there, electric cars need washing too, you know, it can transition fairly easily down the road. It's easier than in-ground tanks in that sense because it's pretty expensive to take out in-ground tanks and there's a pretty good process to go through, on the order of $25,000 just to take them out, not including any other expenses. So these would be considerably easier to get rid of, so to speak.
For sure. The other thing that was mentioned is yearly testing is performed. Is that something that you're, the company requires or is required by state law?
There are, there's annual, annual or bi- annual, depending on what part. It's in Massachusetts regulations.
Okay. Cool. What I'm...
Because in addition to the tanks themselves, which are continuously monitored twice, one with the annular space monitor and one in the, in the discharge unit that sends the gas out. And actually, third, in the, there's an in-tank probe that continuously monitors the level in the tank and detects any abnormal drop in product level.
Mm-hmm.
We have all of those ways of monitoring the tank itself. And I've kind of lost a little bit of my train of thought here, but there, there are just so many pieces of this. They now require testing for the, talking about in-ground tanks for a second. They have, when you go to a gas station, there's ports in the ground where they put the gas in, and those are, those are contained.
Yep.
Okay? There's sumps underneath the, the dispensers that contain any spillage. There's sumps at the tank. In the case of the above-ground tank, there's a sump that's a transition where they go into the ground and then pass underground. Those have to be tested periodically now so that we know that they're tight. They're monitored continuously for leakage, but now you have to test for the tightness, integrity of that sump on a regular basis in Massachusetts. These are relatively newer regulations. They keep upping the penalty all the time.
So what I'm hearing is, like you referenced some Connecticut regulations about making, ensuring the, the tank is replaced when it needs to, based on its warranty. I know that we can say, perhaps, Big Y has best interests at heart, and we want to ensure that the next owner, if Big Y were to sell, had those same interests at heart. The part that I think would make our town zoning bylaw more robust, and maybe this is where we can get more, we can feel more comfortable with this, is if either your experts or you provide funding for experts to help us improve the bylaw such that it is tighter in terms of those protections. Do you know what I'm saying?
I, I kind of follow you.
Yep.
And just to get you started, I could recommend some, some documents that would be helpful to you. One of them, if there's a, there's an agency that essentially is, it's an organization of petroleum-related industries. It's called Petroleum Equipment Institute because it started with a couple of manufacturers of equipment. But now there are all kinds of members, including installers, oil companies, engineering firms, who have an interest in this field, who belong to this organization. And they have, over the years, been developing what are now considered to be the standards for in-ground tank installation, above-ground tank installation, testing of, of, of sites for a variety of things. They're, they're, so they're called the recommended practices.
Yeah.
And...
And perhaps...
I would be happy to supply you with a, some direction as to how you can get your hands on that.
Yeah. That's, that's, that's my thought.
That would be a real good starting point, especially with the above-ground recommended practices.
My thought right now, to make this more acceptable by, I see we have Westfield and Holyoke, is looking at this zoning bylaw and, let's say, lack of better words, tightening it up with the industry best practices such that our municipality and the aquifer, which we share with our neighbors, is best protected. So that's my advice.
Again, Mr. Chairman, if I can, for the record. And I appreciate the, the request, I guess, it's sort of what I'm hearing from a couple of commission members, is sort of to, to come up with some kind of performance standards specific to this. And my point being on that is there are performance standards that have been highly vetted and highly regulated from a state perspective. For example, if, if someone were to put a septic system in town here, they have to follow the minimum requirements of Title V. So there's really no need for this commission to reiterate and regurgitate all of the requirements under Title V. It's, if, if a site plan is permitted to have a septic system, then the applicant has to get permission through the Title V process, has to get a permit to install that septic system. So those performance standards are inherently protective to the environment if Title V is adhered to. And, and my point being on that from a standpoint of the, the regulatory compliance issues or performance standards, is again, this has been highly vetted under CMR 310 and the environmental regulations in the state of Massachusetts. So the things that you would be looking for to say, do we meet those minimum requirements? There's already a requirement, you can't have underground storage tanks in this district. If you have an above-ground storage tank, you have to meet those minimum requirements that are stipulated in the regulations. So you have a performance standard that if this board were to allow this as a permitted use, it just doesn't mean anybody can install what they want to install. They have to follow those standards. So that's, I think, what we're looking for this evening is the, the ability to have this as a use. Again, that use would have to follow all of the state requirements in the watershed protection district, because we are in the watershed protection district. We are not exempt from that. We must follow all state and federal guidelines for compliance with that. And any of the environmental requirements under the notice of intent process through the conservation commission, all are vetted through state regulations. We are responsible for that. We have to meet minimum, your stormwater policy manual in Massachusetts, which requires the use of best management practices, BMPs, and best available technology or best available control technologies, BACT. And your regulations do have some of that as far as stormwater management regulations are concerned. We would have to comply with all of those. And those things are vetted on, you know, the site plan, special permit review level for the specific application. So those are things that any applicant would have to do in any, any site plan or special exception or special permit that came before this board. They're required to demonstrate compliance with your regulations. And then other reviewing agencies at the state and maybe even federal level, if it's an Army Corps of Engineers process involved in that, they're required to be fully vetted under that process. It doesn't absolve the applicant from following those performance standards under other regulatory boards. So I just, I just, I recommend that we, we don't get caught up in just the minutia of the performance standards specific to a certain... regulation, because inherently, there's, there's another level, multiple levels of protection that are afforded under the statutes of both the state and the federal government. Thank you.
Can I ask one more question? This is actually a question for the board, because I would look at the map, right, and my concern, and I would like someone on the board to double-check this. I was trying to locate where Cumberland Farms, the other gas station, is in town. And my concern is, if we're, we had an issue, we have an issue with the, with the, what a car wash, right? Can someone verify that the Cumberland Farms is not in the water protection district? Because those, from my, I have not seen above-ground tanks in that Cumberland Farms. So perhaps they have them? I'm not saying they don't, but-
It could be grandfathered, because it was an older gas station, possibly. I don't know the history of that. I couldn't-
Right. I'm just wondering what the, if there is precedence in this town of-
Where it's first, yeah.
Well, this is- Gas stations in the water protection district.
It's confusing because it's only in the, uh, Provo.
I looked at Lynn Drive, because I think that's close to it.
Yes.
That's off the top of my head.
So this is probably, uh, my-
Yeah, so just, just north, probably better.
Yeah.
Doesn't appear to be, Dan.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad I was wrong.
It seems like most of the land on the west-
Can you actually just show me where it is? I was mistaken. I was confused.
Cumberland's right in here.
This is Pomlineau. Here's the commercial village Gunwell.
I had it. I had it somewhere else.
No.
And these lines this way are-
This is north, basically.
So this is the water supply protection?
Flood plain, yeah.
So these lines are, which direction?
Flood, flood plain and verticals, that's, that's not water protection.
But which way are these lines going? You said horizontal.
I think those are all water protection over there.
Right.
And that's making everything-
Yeah.
All, all that.
So, so if you're, if you're talking this area here, right, is that what we're talking about?
Cumberland is, yeah.
Right. So what type of line is that?
It's, 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 it's all this overlay?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Because I know, I know the proposed parts of the villages are over here, so yeah, it is. How did, how did that get in there then? Cumberland?
That is a concern I have.
Cumberland is underground tank.
I'm not sure, but there's actually another gas station in town.
That's where, yeah, that's on the other side of P.I.S. and Sonoco.
Yeah. Just, I mean, we should check that one as well, while we're looking at gas stations.
Yeah, they're, they're on it, too.
So, so is all we're saying, all the gas stations that currently exist in town are in the water protection district?
Again, these overlay maps were created not a hundred years ago. They were updated and I don't know when the act for overlay just-
Yeah, it'd be interesting to know when the overlay maps were, you know, that the district was designed and whatever, because you're right, you've got Cumberland Farms and you've got Sonoco up there on, uh-
I believe those are all the gas stations in town. Yes.
Those are all, yeah.
So-
And those are under, and those are underground tanks, too.
And they're underground tanks. So I'm-
The delineations have been sort of more recent rather than the history.
I know. I, I understand this. I'm just thinking about the decision that we're making.
Okay. We've got to keep moving here because it's getting late. Yes, sir.
We put, allowed, uh, Big Y to put a, one of these stations in, in Westfield. We put it in down on the Main Street area across from their store. That is not a water protection district, but it is a flood zone. And they did put in a very good system. They met all our demands. They did a very good job. But having said that, it's not a water protection district. The water protection district, we've got to protect this at all costs. Now is not the time to open up the water protection district possibilities of contamination. We've already had contamination in there, and we're trying to clean it up and prevent it. We need to take more care of our water protection district, just like all the rest of our natural resources. Once you contaminate it, it takes a long time to fix it, if you can even fix it. Now, you were talking about the gas stations that are existing. Probably, like you, like we have in Westfield, some of these went in before these regulations were put into place. And therefore, you're, you're kind of stuck with them, even if they've got the old steel single-wall tanks. And you just hope that they don't get a problem.
We can rely on DEP.
Pardon me?
We can rely on DEP to apply all the new regulations.
But, you know, the state has its regulations, you know, the towns have their zoning, but the state regulations are, are designed to tell the organizations how they have to build these things to make them safe. Our zoning laws were put in there to protect our town and our natural resources. And if we start allowing these zoning regulations to be watered down, just because the state allows something, we're destroying our own natural resources. The state doesn't live here. We do. We need to protect what we have, and that the way we do that is with our zoning regulations. That zoning relation, regulation was put in for a reason, and that reason hasn't changed. To, to change it now would be going back a step. We've made a lot of steps forward in protecting everything. To do this, to make this change would be a step backwards in protecting our natural resources. Now, I'm sure that Big Y would do a wonderful job. Their engineers will do a great job, but you're still imposing something over a, a district that is very sensitive, and we need to protect that sensitive district. Thank you.
To, to your comment, if we were to, say, the DEP were to address the existing gas stations in town, they would make them come up to the state standard, right?
About that, right?
They are regulated by the DEP as a vintage gasoline-
Stringent standards that the state has.
There's not really a term zoning question.
Okay. So you're saying, you weren't saying that if we change our zoning regulations, that it would impact those existing gas stations?
We had an option.
Great. Thank you. So I was wondering what happened to all the gas in town.
Well, that's another question.
Yeah, I think, I think I want to make sure we're clear that Big Y is proposing this particular project, and I don't think this is a bad project, but that's not what we're talking about tonight. We're talking about changing the zoning bylaws to effect all of the zone to the entire town to allow gas stations. You know, so that, that's sort of, I mean, appreciate Big Y and I'm glad with the reputation. Been around here for a long time, forty years, and love your store and love your reputation. But we are talking about changing the zoning for the entire town, not just this project. And so we need to think about the big picture. I think Richard thing, well, let's, let's clear up the ambiguity in the zoning. I agree with that, where you had to go back and forth, but that's just cleaning up the language. I think the big question is, should we allow a prohibited use, previously prohibited use throughout the entire town and zone to? I know, I think the town has gone through a lot of hoops and a lot of efforts to protect both surface water and subsurface watershed shed areas in town. An extraordinary amount of time and effort and money to do that. And I, I, so, and, and building on this one, because I, I agree with the concept of there are current regulations and DEP is, you know, strict in their process and, but again, why are we opening up a potential for additional areas for primarily is gas stations? And I think that's the biggest question. And I don't know how many gas stations we are proposing to see in the town of Southampton in the next X number of years. And is it a wise decision to put those in the aquifer, or are there other locations that they would be as viable? And so I'm, I'm sort of a little bit on the fence here. I think that the regulations are strong and stringent. Is it, is it wise to eliminate that prohibition, which is there to protect natural resources, which sometimes we can't get back?
I'm sensing at this point, there's at least two, maybe three, that think it's too soon to proceed with this. I'm not sure if, maybe all four, but I would suggest that if it doesn't go forward at this time, and if you don't think it's on pass, I wouldn't put it forward, I would suggest if you don't proceed at this time, we put revision of the water supply protection district on the agenda for the May town meeting. One, if you did that, one of the things you'd want to do is differentiate between zones two and three, as Holyoke does and Westfield obviously do, because they don't regulate three at all. And some regulate all three, some just do one, one and two, some just do two and three, and some just do two. So I think if you don't proceed this time, I'd highly recommend that you put a high priority to revision water supply protection district for the May town meeting, because if in fact you're regulating zone three as tight as do zone two, I don't think, think that's warranted. I don't know. Obviously, Westfield wouldn't think so, because they don't regulate three at all. And Holyoke regulates three less strictly than two.
Well, Westfield does not, but those regulations were written a long time ago for us, you know. So we are constantly looking at them, and if there is an interest from Southampton to talk with us, to try and consolidate and get both of our regulations in, in sync, I can't speak for the whole planning board, but I can speak for myself, and I think the planning board would go along with that, would agree to sit down with you guys and go through and sync our plans together. Myself, I think we do one and two, and we also should be doing more with three. Again, that's my opinion, and I have several members on the board who also agree with that. The problem we've got and you've got is you have certain things that have been allowed in the past before these regulations are put in. So we've got to be careful when we write the regulations that we don't go back and damage what's already existing. But we can make them meet standards with our regulations. So I think the Westfield planning board would be more than willing to talk with you and sit down with you to consolidate the regulations, to make them so that they're, they're both the same, because we're, we're both trying to get the same results. We're trying to get, protect the aquifer. And to do that in a common way makes all the sense in the world to me, and my, I'm sure my board would feel the same way.
And Mike, I'm not intending to offend any of the planning boards in the region, just to turn, point out there are differences of how it's regulated, how it's not regulated. And if Board One proceed with the May town meeting, I would suggest what we're going to do is look at Holyoke, East Hampton, and Westfield and see it, now, we can come by what we think is best for Southampton and see if there's buy-in from the other communities of how you regulate zone three and zone two, so there's some consistency.
Well-
So people aren't buying, on picking one community against the other.
Yeah.
There's a silver lining that could come out from this, because we had not addressed water supply protection in the last round of zoning we had passed last May town meeting. So who knows how long it would have taken before we would have addressed it if this had not come about, showing all the inconsistencies that are in the bylaw.
Dan, may I comment back to the man from Westfield?
Yeah.
Oh, so as, as the planning board is, we have representatives to the PVPC, which-
Right, we do also.
Right, which had formed Bay PAC.
Yeah, and there's been talk of trying to bring Bay PAC back. I don't know where it stands at this point, but I know there has been conversations about it.
Right. So I'm, what I'm proposing is that was a, a good method for all the Barnes Aquifer towns, like, I mentioned, even Northampton was involved. You know, he didn't know that Northampton was far the walk aquifer, that we talk about re-establishing that. I mean-
Well, the, yes, the re-establishing Bay PAC, but you're right, the Pioneer Valley Council there.
Yeah.
I'm not the representative on that.
Yep.
But our representative would be more, would probably be more than willing to get involved with your representative there and bring it to the, to the group. I'm sure I'd have to talk to him, or you could, depending on who your representative is.
I brought that up to PVC directly and brought up to Patty, Cambry, who used to be the person in PVPC who ran that. So I think it's a matter of, you know, I'm glad you're here tonight, if you want to start the conversation.
That's a good way to probably start it off, start the conversations off, is through there. That, you know, that way there you'd get everybody involved in it who's got an interest in the aquifer, rather than just the, the two towns, Westfield and East Southampton. So I think that would work well. If you're, who's, who's your represent-
Oh, you are now. Okay.
Okay. Talk to our representative. I don't, I think it's, it was Bernie Puzza, but I'm not sure if he still is or not.
You're the chair.
Pardon me?
You're the chair.
I'm not the chair, no. The chair is Bill Correlos.
All right. We'll connect in the future on this, and thank you.
It's a website.
So without any further ado, is there any more questions or information the board needs regarding this topic?
No.
That being the case, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made by Dan and seconded by Stephen to close the public hearing. Any other further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Now, I'm going to ask your decision on whether we should forward this to the select board to be placed on a town warrant. Dan, are you in favor or against sending this along?
I believe we should take another revision before we send this along, so I, I think I'm saying no.
Okay. Stephen?
No. I'll say no.
Mark? So not to be a spoilsport, I guess I will, and again, it's, I'm not, I'm not against economic development, but this is a little bit more sensitive than that. And I guess the sentiment from the board, our budding towns, I think this needs more research, and perhaps in the future with tweaking the bylaw, maybe there, there can be some adjustments made. But with a sensitive area like the water supply protection, as all the information's come out tonight, I will vote with my colleagues, no. So this motion, the amendment will, has failed, and it will not be forwarded to town meeting for approval. I'm sorry for the outcome for the folks at Big Y and the true hearts. It was a great concept, and you've been a great neighbor in town and a source of a lot of employment and good food and donations to the town and a lot of respects. And we hope you will not be so offended by our decision tonight.
We appreciate your time.
Yes.
I have a question for the board. Is a sense of board that you want to try to push revision of the water supply protection district to have for the May town meeting?
I'm saying yes. I would like to do that. But that's my, can I, do I make a motion to that?
No, I'm just trying to get a sense.
No, we'll, we'll put it on the agenda. You're, you're done with your other consulting when? November or December?
He's a busy man.
The one that conflicts with your meetings will be finished in November. I have other work I'm doing.
We can probably start at the first of the year and have it well done, probably.
I can actually start working on it now, because there's still time available, but, and there's some preliminary work that needs to be done in terms of trying to see if we can differentiate between ones, two, and three using available data sources.
It'd be great to have a crosswalk of what the different towns in the aquifer protection area-
area allow and don't allow by zone.
I've done it for the issue of gas stations and above ground storage and car wash, which is, is interesting because, yes, but I can do the background research so we have the available come January.
And, and the mapping, I don't know that it's changed all that much, but it is really important for us to have maps that show zone three separate from zone two.
Absolutely, because you want, you don't need regulate zone three as tight as zone two. And if you're doing that...
Zone two has been tested and proven to directly contribute to a point source well. So that's what that is. That's why zone two demands...
And I say what I do about zone three because you look at the regulate, look at the bylaws that I looked at for Westfield, East Hampton, Northampton, Amherst, the others that, what you see is those that do differentiate between one, two, and three, three is not quite as stringent as two. And if you're treating two the same as three, then you're being overly strict in three, and that's where you may want to look at some flexibility on it.
But here's the thing.
My perspective.
These, these other towns that sent us letters, if they're not willing to do the same thing, come on. So let's talk.
And what I would do is when we start doing this, I would suggest that followed my road be to contact the planning director in Westfield, East Hampton, and Northampton and say this what Southampton's looking at. And come with something that is more consistent.
Thank you.
I think there'll be positive reception in Westfield. Westfield, my chairman wanted to be here tonight to be another committee.
I'd be careful because I know we have limited budget here, so...
Don't worry, we'll send them a bill too.
We have one.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, moving right along, any committee reports?
Well, since Cindy hasn't stepped out of the door yet. All right, so the good news is that the state grant, the landscape partnership grant came through for the Mountain Waters Project. Nine properties in...
Eight.
Eight in Southampton, couple that extend into neighboring towns. I don't have the dollars at the tip of my tongue. I have it here somewhere, but it has continued to improve in terms of the state grant, obviously, private contributions that have come in to reduce the amount that's being asked of Southampton Community Preservation Act. And the available balance in the undesignated fund currently in Southampton is sufficient to supply the budget for this proposed acquisition.
You got some good publicity on that.
Yeah, I went to the beauty parlor just before that. Yeah, no, we did. And we got good response from select board last night for that. So the big key is the select board has established the special town meeting date. Obviously, I'm hoping everybody listening tonight listens to this, that it's going to be December sixth, five, sorry, December fifth, which is a Tuesday for special town meeting, and we need people to get out, and we're going to be talking about ways to educate people around the details of this big project.
And a major focus is water supply protection.
That's right.
Correct.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other committee reports?
Mark?
I think we're good.
You want to hear about the assessors? Not tonight. An evolving situation with a shorthanded department, what's new?
I only have one warrant tonight from Daily Hampshire Gazette for the hearing ad for this hearing, which thankfully Big Y helped pay half of. I didn't have, I didn't have to ask, but I took a chance, and they agreed to split the cost of the legal... There's a legal ad, looking for a total warrant. The warrant for the Daily Hampshire Gazette was eight ninety-two and twelve cents, and as I just mentioned, that Big Y did pick up fifty percent of that, so our portion's only like four ninety-something. So eight ninety-two, twelve to the Daily Hampshire Gazette. Motion?
So made.
Second?
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Other than that, I don't have anything. Richard, anything else?
No, and as it turned out, the, not meeting next Wednesday anyway, but the conflict I have next Wednesday is not going to occur because they're not having me neither.
I...
What is on the horizon, Chairman?
I canceled November meeting because we're meeting tonight, so we're not going to meet next week. Furthermore, there was nothing in my box. So right now, are you available the third meeting in November? No.
The fifteenth?
Yeah.
I don't know for sure yet. Right now, they don't have anything pending in their agendas. They won't know until next week for sure.
Right, well, just watch your email or my town government because I may, if there's nothing going on, I'll cancel. We'll be back on our regular schedule come December so we can start the wheels turning on some of these zoning amendments. There's others to look at. In fact, Ed Gibson emailed me this afternoon, he wants us to look at, and I discussed it with Richard, I thought it would be a general bylaw, but I guess you can, you can do something in zoning. He's looking to have us look at fines, to assess fines for people that, the building inspector can, can do a cease and desist order, but since there's no fine associated with it, they ignore them. So they need something, the letting fines for X number of days or whatever, so we'll look into it. Richard's going to see what it is, but my gut feeling, I thought it was a general bylaw, but maybe not.
John Condon, just when you'd written the Wetland Protection Act, some con column, we added fines in there which were according to the national law, so maybe we can look at that as reference in terms of the finding.
So you guys, you guys can assess?
We can, yeah, we can give fines.
No, I don't want this board to get in the, you know, I don't want to be a...
No, no, we don't do the fine.
I mean, the building inspector could, he does that for the conservation?
But in zoning, the planning board could not issue fine, the building commissioner might be able to do that. The, the planning board has no enforcement authority at all. And he has to, he or she has to do the enforcement.
You want me to, do you, so do you...
I researched that, I, I'll get that...
If not, I'll just, whatever you come up with, I'll write back to Ed and tell him, you know, it should be general.
I'll look at it, I'll look at it and try to get something either tomorrow or Monday. Yeah, I'll try to get that next, the next forty-eight hours.
All right. Have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, oh, second.
It's made in second.
Bye.
Have a good week. Thank you, sir. Have a good week, whenever we meet again.
All right.
I'll see you tomorrow night, Stephen.